Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is October 20, 21. October 20, 2021. And it's 2:00 PM. And so, welcome. I'm going to ask our clerk. This meeting is called to order, and I'm going to ask our clerk if you would please call the roll and establish quorum and read the Metro Cable statement.
Supervisor Desmond? Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli? Serna?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
You have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is Cablecast Live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net. Today's meeting will be repeated Monday, October 25th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14.
Thank you, and I'd like to invite everyone to please join me in the -- rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Board of Supervisors encourages public participation during the meeting in person, telephonically, or in writing. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, this meeting is broadcast live and open to the -- to in-person attendance. The county requires face mask or face shield while inside the county's administration building, which includes the board chambers and hearing rooms, and recommends social distancing. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended public health and safety guidelines. Public comments will be taken in order of person comments -- in order of in-person comments and then comments by phone. If you're making a public comment in person, a face mask or face shield is required, and social distancing is recommended while inside the chambers or hearing rooms 1 and 2. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis inside the chambers, and overflow seating is available in the hearing rooms 1 and 2. If there are no seats available inside the chambers or overflow room, please form a line in the designated area and wait your turn to make a public comment. Please complete a speaker request form and give it to the clerk staff. A separate speaker request form is required for each agenda item or topic that is not on the posted agenda. When I open the public comments, I will call three names at a time. When you hear your name, please start walking towards the podium inside the chambers and wait your turn to make your comment. If you're making a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along and determine when is the best time to call to be placed in the queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. I will ask the clerk to transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public will be given two minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. If you need accommodation, pursue it to the Americans with Disability Act, or for medical reasons, please see the clerk staff for assistance to contact -- or contact the clerk staff at 916-874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you in advance for your courtesy, and your patience, and your understanding of the meeting procedures. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to please read our timed and board matters.
Item number one is Professional Public Opinion Poll of Sacramento County Residents' Budget Priorities.
We just dove right in, and welcome Supervisor Natoli.
Good afternoon, Chair Frost, members of the board. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer, and I'm excited to be here this afternoon to introduce this item. This afternoon, Dave Metz and Miranda Everett from FM3 Research, the public opinion research firm that the county has selected to conduct a survey of county residents, will be providing an overview of the survey methodology and timeline, as well as the survey outline, including the types of questions asked and the topics and issues included. As you know, this public opinion survey is a key component of the outreach and engagement plan for the fiscal year 2223 budget that will result in budget priorities being recommended to the board in advance of the formal budget process, which will begin in January. As part of this plan, during August and September, county departments conducted outreach with the county's advisory boards and commissions to get their input on priorities for the county's budget. To date, we've received responses representing 59 boards and commissions with nearly 300 distinct issues or priorities identified. I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank both the department staff and the board and commission members who participated in this process. Key themes that emerged from the responses submitted include homeless encampments and affordable housing, health and human services, including youth and senior programming, family supports and health programs, mental health and alcohol-drug services, parks and recreation, and transportation, including road maintenance. In consultation with FM3, and as you'll see in their presentation, these themes have been incorporated into the questions to be asked in the resident survey. At this point, I'll turn it over to Dave Metz, who is here in person, and Miranda Everett, who is joining by phone, to discuss the survey in more detail.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Dave Metz, president of FM3 Research, based in Oakland, and I'm happy to be with you today to talk about the methodology that we propose for the budget priority survey, as well as the key areas of questioning that we propose to include in the questionnaire. We welcome your input and suggestions as we finalize the survey and prepare to put it in the field within the next couple of weeks. I'm going to walk through some of the key elements of the survey methodology first, and then highlight some of the individual areas of questioning that are currently in our draft outline. And our goal here is really to try to come up with the most diverse and representative sample of adult Sacramento residents possible. To that end, the approach we have proposed is to conduct an address-based survey, which starts with a random sample of residential addresses countywide, and I'll talk a little bit more about the process by which that sample is drawn, targeting within each household a random resident aged 18 and over. We propose to conduct 800 interviews total, which will give us an overall margin of sampling error of plus or minus 3.5 percent, somewhat higher when we look at subgroups within that overall sample. In order to be as inclusive as possible and try to reduce the possibility that language barriers will prevent participation, we propose to conduct the survey in nine languages: English, Spanish, Arabic, Chinese, Farsi, Mung, Punjabi, Russian, Tagalog, and Vietnamese. One of the central challenges with doing any kind of survey research these days is that far fewer people answer their phones than used to be the case, either landline phones for those who still have them, or wireless phones. And so, for that reason, we have increasingly adopted approaches where we use multiple different modes of reaching out to that same underlying sample of households to try to invite them to participate in the survey. Those methods of outreach will involve telephone calls placed to both landline and wireless phones, text invitations sent to mobile phones, and email invitations sent to people for whom we have email addresses, as well as postcards with a URL linking to the survey that will be mailed to households for whom we have no other contact information. And that will then enable us to actually complete the interviews either with a live interviewer, by phone, or online for those who receive the text or email invitations. A little bit more about the address-based approach. Essentially, we start by using the United States Postal Service Delivery Sequence File, which lists all residential addresses within the county, both homes and rental properties. We will take a random sample of addresses from that file and then match them to a variety of databases to find whatever contact information we can associated with that physical address. That includes voter registration records and commercial databases. All of those sources that are scraping our personal information when we're out there as consumers, providing that information, sort of come back to these databases, and we can match that to the physical addresses. We'll start then by emailing invitations to everyone within our sample for whom we have an email address, because that's the fastest and most cost-efficient way to get some initial responses. And we'll evaluate the distribution of the responses we get back compared to census data. Those email respondents are likely to be older, more likely to be homeowners, longer-term residents of the county. And then, when we move on to our next set of contact approaches, the phone calls and the text messages, we'll focus on households that are underrepresented geographically or demographically within the overall sample population. For those households for whom we have not been able to find a phone or email contact information, we will send a random sample, a postcard, which includes a URL with a link to complete the survey online. Again, same underlying sample that will get reached out to by all of these contact methods. In many households, we might try a couple of different ways of reaching them: phone call, text message, or an email.
Excuse me, Supervisor Serna had a question.
Yes, thank you. First of all, thanks for being here and explaining the process here. And I'll just preface, not just this question or interruption, but like the further questions and interruptions as we go through your presentation. But this is important, and I want to understand the strengths, as well as the weaknesses, of the survey instrument. So, this appears to me that this would self-select only those people that are sheltered. If, you know, it's estimated that we have probably 10,000 to 11,000 unsheltered people in Sacramento County. It's a very rough estimate. But as has been already referenced, some of the most popular concerns have to do with homelessness. So, in terms of how the survey might be adjusted to at least have as some part of the sample size those that are unsheltered, is there a way to do that that's practical? I understand, you know, you're working with what you have available in terms of accessing individuals to participate in the survey, but it seems to me that if we, by design, exclude those that arguably have the greatest need for social services and mental health and behavioral health and public health services, we're doing ourselves perhaps a disservice.
It's an excellent point, Supervisor, and that's -- it is a challenge with this methodology, or frankly, with almost any other survey methodology, to capture people who are currently unhoused. There are a couple of things we can do to try to address that concern. The first is, most of the phone numbers that we're likely to generate through our sampling are going to be mobile phone numbers. And while they may have, at the time the number was put into a database, been associated with a specific physical address, as you know, many people go through periods of being unsheltered and sheltered, and sort of back and forth. And so, we often find in these surveys that we will capture people who may have been sheltered a month ago or two, but are currently unsheltered. So, some portion of our sample will capture that way, but not sufficient to capture the full population of people who are currently without shelter. Another alternative that we have implemented in other jurisdictions than we could do here is to create a separate URL, which potentially can be distributed to organizations that in Sacramento County that work with unsheltered residents of the county. And if they are given an opportunity, whether it's at a shelter or some other physical location, to access a computer and fill out the survey, they can then be approached there, complete the survey at a time of their convenience, and then we can capture more responses from that population. We can then do some statistical weighting to figure out the best way to integrate that data into the full body of survey research. And that doesn't add any cost to the survey. We're happy to do that if that's an approach that sounds like it might work.
No, I appreciate that. I just, I'm wondering if, and I'm kind of looking at Ann here, whether or not there's an opportunity to work with, perhaps Sacramento Steps Forward and their navigation team, who I believe has some infrastructure available to them to capture by way of, you know, literally going out in the field and interfacing with people that are unsheltered, trying to change their circumstance. But I'm wondering if there's a way we might complement what has been explained here relative to physical addresses and the people that would participate with some small subset of folks that we could intentionally go out and solicit their input as well.
So, yes, I do think that's a possibility, and there's also, DHA has, you know, outreach social workers, and there's a large population of homeless that routinely come to our 28th Street location, and we have interview rooms where there's a computer, and so I think there are some possibilities that we can work with them to figure out.
Great. Yeah, I wouldn't expect that we're going to design it from a peer in terms of how best to do it, but, you know, I'm going to go out on a limb and say I don't think I'm the only one that probably has the same interest or concern about making sure we acquire important information from our unsheltered constituents. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll be happy to work with staff to come up with some alternatives to make sure we capture an adequate sample of folks who are unsheltered. Now, a little bit about the sample size of the survey. So, we are recommending a sample of 800. This is a robust sample for a countywide survey. Typically, in Sacramento County, for other types of research, we might interview 400 to 600 people. The margin of error of the survey is directly related to the sample size, and as you'll see from the chart on the bottom of the slide, 800 randomly selected responses will get us an overall margin of error of plus or minus 3.5 percent. Essentially, we often get the question, how can 800 people speak for the opinions of a county in a population as large as Sacramento County overall? And the critical element is that as long as the people we speak to are randomly selected from the broader population, statistical theory tells us that the vast majority of the time, the responses we get from that sample will be within a couple of percentage points of what we would get if we interviewed every single resident of the county. The same logic applies when surveys are done statewide or nationally, and you all see lots of national survey data. Typically, those are surveys of 1,000 or 1,200 people out of 330 million Americans. And yet, if the sample is carefully selected on a random basis, it can speak for that broader population. Conversely, samples that are not randomly selected, where people are just invited to participate, and they can choose to opt in, and there's no attempt to select people randomly, no matter how large the sample size, it is not considered representative, and we can't generalize those results to the broader population. In addition, there's a variety of other techniques that we will employ to ensure our sample's representativeness for the county as a whole. Inevitably, with any kind of survey research, there are certain demographics that are just more likely to respond to surveys than others, and in order to adjust for that, for example, it's much easier to get older residents to respond than the youngest residents to respond. We will set demographic quotas based on census data for age, gender, ethnicity, and geography within the county. And once we've interviewed enough people in one specific demographic group, we will simply keep targeting our additional interviews toward those underrepresented groups until, at the end of the day, the respondents we have reflect the demographic composition of the county as a whole. In some cases, there are elements we can't control, for things like education level, for example. And we'll look at those variables, and if the data we get back varies from what census data tells us is the true distribution for all residents of Sacramento County, we'll statistically weight the data to address any other minor discrepancies, so that the final body of data will look like the overall population of Sacramento County.
Excuse me, Supervisor Natoli would like to speak.
Yes.
Yeah, Dave, just back to your map. I think certainly in fairness to all of our incorporated cities, Isleton should be reflected on that map.
Yes, we'll make sure that if we reuse this.
You know, ever how your sampling, I get it, you were just going through methodology, but you've called out the major thoroughfares, highways, and so forth, and I just, I think, out of fairness, even though it's a very small city, it is incorporated.
Absolutely, we'll do.
Thank you, thank you.
We have laid out here the overall schedule for the survey. We are at October 20th here, so we're sort of right at the point of being about to finalize the survey, based on the input that we'll get from all of you today, with the goal of sending out our first wave of invitations for residents to participate five days from now, on October 25th. We plan to be in the field for about two weeks, collecting responses, and then we'll have results available at the beginning of November with an analysis by the middle of the month, and will remain available after that time for ongoing consultation and analysis of the data as you continue your deliberations about the budget. So, this is an aggressive timetable, but it's one that we think is manageable, given the specifications that we've laid out. So, that summarizes the methodology of the poll. The last couple of slides I want to go over here highlight the questions that we intend to ask. These slides do not show you the actual wording of the questions. We've just condensed it into outline form, so that you can get a sense of the subject areas that we're going to cover, and we obviously invite any questions or suggestions that you have about ways to refine or improve it. I'll just start by walking through the overall structure, and then happy to go back and talk about individual sort of substance of specific questions, once you have a sense of the overall flow of the survey. So, this initial slide highlights the introductory questions to the survey. We'll get someone on the phone, make sure they're an adult resident of the county, hand off to a bilingual interviewer if necessary, and then ask some core demographic questions to make sure that we're, again, tracking the demographic profile of respondents and making sure it's representative. We'll then have a couple of very big-picture contextual questions, which we'll ask to sort of ease people into the flow of the survey before we start asking about the budget. Is the county headed in the right direction or wrong direction? What do you see as the most important problem that you'd like county government to address? As an open-ended question, where the respondents can tell us whatever's on their minds. And then, offering them a list of specific issues or problems facing the county and asking them to rate their level of concern about each. After those introductory questions, we'll then turn to the subject of the county budget, with some questions asking about their existing perceptions of the budget. How closely do they follow issues related to county budgeting? Do they believe the county's budget, as the year begins, is projected to face a surplus or a deficit? Do they see a need for additional funds to support county services? And then, we'll ask some questions about both elements of quality of life in Sacramento County, that the services the county provides are intended to uphold or support, and then the level of satisfaction that respondents have with the provision of a variety of services that the county offers. And I'll show you a list of the services that we're going to ask about on the next slide. We ask these two questions in parallel, so that we can understand both how important it is to each resident that a certain condition or element of quality of life be achieved, and then how satisfied they are with the county's efforts to provide services that will support that element of quality of life. Those two data points allow us to map out a grid, where we can identify those areas that residents view as most important, and where they are either most satisfied or least satisfied. And those elements that they see as less important, again, with understanding their degree of satisfaction as being high or low. Of those four quadrants, the one that reflects the services or the elements of quality of life that residents view as most important, but where their satisfaction is lower, obviously are places that you may want to consider as higher priorities from the public for budget investment. This is only one of a number of questions we have in the survey that get at this dynamic, but I'll show you the list of services and programs we have drafted to sort of populate this pair of questions. We then have a question where we ask the respondents to imagine a hypothetical $100 within the county budget, and ask them to allocate that $100 over a list of six broad categories of spending, which you'll see detailed on the slide here. The goal here is to put the residents of the county in the same position that you as policymakers are, where you have a limited number of resources, competing priorities across which they need to be allocated, and understand, just based on residents' own instinct, how they think those monies should be divided.
Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were taking a breath. Supervisor Desmond?
Great, thank you.
Had a question, followed by Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. This is great. I appreciate this. I'm just curious, it just occurs to me that, you know, not all, obviously, the county's role for everybody in the county, whether they're in a city or in a county, is the same in terms of health and human services roles, right? But the relationship between some people in the county of Sacramento is not equal across the county, right? Folks in the unincorporated area rely on the county for a heck of a lot more than folks in a city, you know, who meet those municipal needs through their city government. How would you, so I'm just looking at these, you know, you're going to ask them about these five to six broad categories, and these are all great categories, but my concern is, and this is something that I talked to our county exec a lot about, is I just want to make sure that folks who may be living in a city where their roads and their economic development and their parks are in great shape, that might skew what we're getting from the county as a whole, in terms of how those things affect the unincorporated residents.
Have you been on city roads lately, Mr. Desmond?
Sure, they're not all the same either, but some are better than others. But I'm, so I'm just curious, are we going to take any accounting for that and maybe give more weight to the unincorporated residents in terms of the municipal services that they comment on, for instance? Can you comment on that?
Absolutely. The issue you raised is a critical one, and it's one we discussed in sort of putting together this survey outline. We talked about having certain services that we would only ask about in unincorporated areas of the county. But then, upon reflection, we also recognize that for many residents, they may not be certain if they live in an unincorporated area, or if they live in a city. And even if they are, they may not be entirely clear on what services the county provides versus what the city provides. We'll, and, you know, even more fundamentally, what a school district provides or what the state provides. We often see in open-ended questions, when we ask people what's the most important thing for county government to address, we'll get a lot of people who'll say schools. And that's no slur on the people of Sacramento County, like all residents, they, it's complicated, the layers of government that serve them, and, you know, they shouldn't be expected to understand all of those nuances. For that reason, the approach that we've come down with is to ask people about these broad categories, but then, in our analysis, segment away the people who are in unincorporated areas from those who are in cities, so that we can compare them side by side and see if the evaluations are different. It's also the case that if someone lives in a city, they may spend a portion of time driving on county roads in unincorporated areas. So, both will matter to them to some extent, and therefore, we felt it was artificial to completely divorce them. Instead, get opinions from everybody on everything, and then, in our analysis, look at those differences based on where people live.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Following that excellent point by Supervisor Desmond, I wanted to ask if the bulleted six items or categories that you have here, is that verbatim the way it would be presented?
It is our current draft. After a couple of rounds of discussion with staff, that's what we've developed, but we're, it's not final, and we welcome your input to improve it.
So, one suggestion, just because it's been my experience that the term, quote, "public safety" seems to be, can be subjective. I mean, I think, I know what you mean by it here. You probably mean law enforcement, park rangers, probation, fire, safety, which, again, using your recent example with schools, we don't have a fire department either, so just something to consider. But is it worthwhile to, as you've done with the second bullet, maybe do like public safety such as the sheriff's department, or park rangers, something like that? So, I'm assuming that's what you mean by public safety here, correct?
It certainly is a significant part of what we mean by public safety, but obviously, there's also efforts that the county invests in to try to prevent crime and violence from taking place, that are as important as law enforcement.
I mean, let me give you an example, just to put a finer point on it. If I was the respondent, and someone said public safety, in my mind, public safety includes child protective services, includes public health, adult protective services. So, it, you know, depending on what you really intend by the statement "public safety," it might be helpful to be a little bit more surgical in how you present it.
Yeah. I think our intention is, we hope the respondents think about the range of services that you just described. I suspect most of them will think more narrowly about police or sheriffs. But for that reason, I think you're right. If we can think about a way to concisely give a more specific prompt to follow that, that's probably going to be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just as Supervisor Serna was talking with --
Yeah, just as Supervisor Serna was talking with David about this, it seems to me that in that first bullet, public safety, it might be an and/or public protection because I think it goes to some of the things that he mentioned. Certainly broadly under public safety, but public protection, children, families, adults, and you mentioned them obviously in a separate bullet talking about services, which again could involve some of the same elements, but you know, obviously responding to his question, but it seems like that, again, and if you say public protection, people might say, well, what is that? And then we give you the entree to either offer the explanation and/or, you know, further expound on it. But I'll leave it to you as obviously the surveyors and ones that are going to apply the survey instrument. But I think to the point and depending upon what jurisdiction you reside in, incorporated or unincorporated, you know, it may be a different provider. And obviously there are, you know, a number of fire departments and if you get onto rural areas, you're going to have more volunteer, you know, fire services than you do with, you know, some of the larger departments that serve, you know, larger populations. City of Sacramento was certainly metropolitan fire, Sac Metro. And I just, the point in your, I think your response was a good one as to how you would deal with folks in the incorporated or unincorporated area and, because I think that is important and that, I mean, because in one city, the streets may be in better condition and we know that from, and you've worked on this for another body that we all sit on, Transportation Authority. But again, if people take the time to reflect during the survey that I drive on county roads and they, maybe the ones I drive on are good getting to where I get to, or maybe they're not. So I think if you're able to parse some of that out, it will be very useful to this board, but certainly to our staff as we begin to, you know, look at not just budgeting in the current upcoming year, but also I think looking at those things that are priorities and just may very well affirm and confirm what we think we already know, or it may also bring forward some things that, you know, were a little less obvious to this board, but certainly obvious to the people you're going to be asking the questions of. So appreciate it. Thanks, Dave.
Absolutely Supervisor. So we will work with staff and give some more thought to the best way to elaborate how we define public safety in this question and then also make sure that in our analysis, we're looking carefully at those geographic differences. So these next two slides, I'm going to sort of provide an introduction, move past them just to wrap up the sort of overview of the survey and I suspect we may want to come back here and spend some more time on these next two because they're something of a critical question. This is the, these are the list of issues that we intend to use to populate those paired questions I mentioned before, where we'll ask people to rate the importance of aspects of quality of life in the county and then ask them to rate the satisfaction of services that may help to support or contribute to that element of quality of life. There's a couple of slides here that detail these items. This first slide, you'll see running down the left-hand side, the goals or outcomes we might seek to improve or maintain the quality of life in the city. And then on the right-hand side, some of the services the county provides that help to contribute to those goals. For some, like air pollution and climate change, there may be a single service or program that underlies them. For others, there may be multiple points of connection, as we've just discussed, for example. Public safety may connect back to a series of county services. Again, that's something we'll try to tease out in our analysis, but you'll see here the first set of goals or outcomes and services or programs that connect to them. And again, we'll come back to this in a minute, but then on the second page, the second set of services and programs and the goals and outcomes that they connect back to. At the bottom of the slide, for example, we struggled with some of these issues around public safety. Low levels of crime, low levels of incarceration may be goals that the county seeks to achieve. And there's a range of services the county provides, including sheriff's patrols, alternatives to incarceration, and probation services that obviously connect back to those goals. The final set of questions in the survey, after we go through this exercise around priorities and services, are then some items that since we're, they may not relate directly to the county budget, but since we have a random sample of county residents on the phone, it might be worthwhile to ask a couple of other questions, like their experiences contacting county government. Have they in the last year been in contact with a county employee? In which department was that employee? And how satisfied were you with the service that you received from the employee that you contacted on dimensions such as the courtesy shown to you, the timeliness of the response, the effectiveness in addressing your problem or question, and the professionalism shown to you? We'll then conclude the survey with a final series of demographic questions, again, to help us make sure that our sample is representative and also to give us a basis to further segment the responses and understand how different subgroups of respondents view the key questions. Length of time in the county, whether they're born in the U.S. or have immigrated to the country, whether they speak a language other than English at home. Some of those respondents who answer the survey in English may nonetheless be bilingual and speak another language at home and we want to capture that. Homeownership, parenthood, whether they have children, school-aged children at home, and level of household income as well. Because we will know a physical address for all respondents to the survey who are currently sheltered, we also will be able to go back and subdivide the responses by city, by neighborhood, and by supervisory district at the end of the polling.
Excuse me Supervisor Serna had a question?
Yes, actually I have two. Thank you. So with regards to the, under customer satisfaction questions, the first bullet, have they contacted county staff and which department? Would it be perhaps more telling if it was phrased, have they dealt with the county? And if so, which department? And the reason I say it that way versus the way it's presented here is there may be instances where the respondent did not take the initiative to contact the county, but perhaps the county contacted them. Say for instance, a code enforcement issue where, you know, code enforcement initiated contact because of a supposed violation. So it might be worthwhile to phrase it "dealt with" instead of just kind of the one-way communication from the respondent to the county. That's the first question or suggestion. And then the, I understand the concluding questions about children at home, income, so forth and so on. Explain to me again, what is the value in understanding whether they were born or are they, are they an immigrant?
Yeah. We found in other communities that there's an interest from policymakers to understanding whether the immigrant population is as well-served by public services as those who are native-born. And so being able to capture that in the responses is helpful. It's also helpful in making sure that we are adequately representing immigrant residents of Sacramento County among the survey respondents, as they tend to be underrepresented in survey research.
Okay. I understand. Is it, do you think worthwhile maybe to even suggest, you know, are they a refugee? There might be a set of, you know, assumptions, I guess, that you could make about the responses based on that life experience. And this, again, I just want to make sure, this is at the conclusion of the survey, correct?
Correct.
Because I guarantee you, you asked the question at the beginning, you're not going to have any responses.
Yes.
Well, you're going to have fewer responses by those that are not, weren't here, I think.
Absolutely.
So, okay, those are my two questions and suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Both very good points Supervisor. We'll make sure those are addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, thank you, I'm Chair. Dave, back to the customer satisfaction questions, I think certainly to what Phil said, you know, have you had recent experience, encounter, dealt with, however you phrase it, it kind of shows a two-way connectivity. But I think it's also important to know, and again, certainly as we've worked through the pandemic where we've attempted to keep certain public counters open, public facilities open, but, and also recognizing just where folks have gravitated to, sometimes out of necessity, other times by choice for efficiency and, you know, what method they've used. Has it been via email? Has it been through 311? Has it been through the telephone? Has it been through personal contact? I mean, I don't want to bog down your survey and you could spend, you know, too long on this part of it, but I think it's important to know because I think it helps guide us as we're looking at allocation of resources, as we're looking at, you know, improvements to, you know, customer service and, you know, if people have gone through 311 but they're, you know, experiencing long queues or longer response times, then that may tell us that we need to do more there. Or if they're finding that, you know, because we're accessible at different counters, but maybe they need, they'd like to see something in their part of the county. And certainly I can just say during my tenure on this board, we've embarked on trying to have, you know, different iterations of service delivery models. Some of those are very personal and we go to people's homes for certain types of activities, have them come to us, but recognizing the seat of county government is here in downtown by virtue of this building, obviously, and its occupants, but that we've got a multile, you know, a multitude, you know, more than 100 different locations, if I'm not mistaken, where we provide services to folks for a range of things, but in some of them of a general nature, where we did our service centers. And so, again, it might be before you do the survey, we can get some idea around that because, you know, we embarked on that some years ago. We have service centers and even in, break it down to, you know, sheriff service centers, but we also have general service centers, the clerk recorder, and vital statistics and other departments, in addition to obviously human services and health and human services. So maybe a way to phrase this so you don't get too all over the map, but I would suggest, because again, as we're looking at allocation and certainly some of our fixed costs as relates to the physical assets, but also having appropriate staffing, customer service, and certainly portals and different main lines by which folks can contact the county and hopefully get a good response and, you know, get their issues addressed or at least know that there's been an acknowledgement. I think that's key because it goes to a lot of what we do and I think that this organization, as large as it is, but for the breadth and depth of things that we touch people's lives each and every day in some cases, I think it's important for us, certainly as decision-makers here, the five supervisors, but certainly for Ann and her staff, but our department heads, as well as our line staff, because it will help guide us at least in some respects on, you know, maybe setting the tone. If we continue this effort in years to come, I think it will either provide further affirmation or then, or, you know, help guide us in directions that will allow us to have informed, better-informed decisions here at the DIAS, but certainly as we're making recommendations through the exec's office in our department. So again, I wouldn't just leave that as kind of the second thought, oh, you've contacted county, that's great, you know, how is the service good? Go down to the next question. I think this is an area where it could be very, very helpful beyond understanding priorities and how people might spend the dollar and what they might think about their respective supervisor or this body, but how are we as an organization, you know, doing? And if we're not doing it well enough, where can we improve? And if we're doing it well, then we want to build on that. So, and I just ask you, do you have any thoughts along those lines? I know, I don't know if you have input, but you're asking us, but you're our leader here of the organization, so I'm curious about on that particular customer service piece.
So I'm wondering if we add a question about in what manner did they interact with the county? Was it on the phone? Was it via email? Was it in person? Might capture some of that.
Okay.
What, I mean, what if something that may be a question that says, how could the service have been improved or something like that, right? I mean, that really gets to.
Yeah. If we did it well, why was it good or if it wasn't so good?
Right.
And I just think if you're going to get somebody on the phone, you've got 800 folks and this is going to be a good sample, if we can get an idea, one point in time how we're doing, but how we can improve and then how that fits with our budget priorities, I just think we're all going to be better served up here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a good suggestion, both of you.
Yeah, absolutely. We can look to include both of those questions in the survey.
And Dave, just, and I appreciated your response to Supervisor Serna's questions about, you know, where your, you know, place of birth was and so forth. I think that if there's any hesitation around that, then I think explain, you know, having your survey folks have it available to them to explain why that question's being asked. Because if there's a hesitancy by the party you're talking with, or maybe even some, you know, resistance, well, why do you ask that? Well, here's why we ask it. It's not just because we want to know, it's because we're looking at service levels that are provided to folks, you know, irrespective of their age or their place of birth, their...
Or at least a reminder of anonymity.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a good point too. So however you do it, but I just think, again, I'd hate to see you get all the way down here and then have somebody really be, you know, sad that they participated in your survey because, you know, they were a little dissatisfied with the way that was answered. But so at any rate, that's all I have. Thanks.
I just have one quick question. On the goals and services to assess, can we assume that the prompt waste disposal and recycling pickup includes illegal dumping? Because that's a big problem in my district. St. Mary's is my district. Will they just think of that and are you assuming they'll think of that under that category?
They may. And we will also ask earlier in the survey, when we have the list of concerns facing the county, illegal dumping is one of the concerns we're going to specifically ask about. So we can cross-tap those two results and see if people, if there's a lower level of satisfaction among those who are concerned about illegal dumping with the county's efforts in this regard.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli has more.
Yeah, you maybe think of something when you ask that question, ma'am Chair, and, because I don't see it here on the, I was going back to the list now, the goals and services. And it's something that, you know, we embarked upon in the late 90s and I don't think we've lost sight of necessarily, but it's certainly not mentioned as much. But looking at our neighborhood services and, you know, particularly the large unincorporated area and it goes to questions not of illegal dumping, but of blight, of responsiveness on, you know, weeds growing in a ditch, you know, potholes in the roads and so forth. You cover a lot of those in general respects, some specifically here, but I do think about, you know, again, we're going to touch 800 people. We ought to ask about how are we doing with neighborhood services or maybe have some broader, I mean, or more specific understanding regarding that, because I think, and it goes to conversations we've had this DIAS, certainly in recent months and over the years, you know, we have large, vast unincorporated areas, we, you know, each of us has represented portions of cities or the city or cities. And, you know, we often get compared, to your point a little earlier about, you know, kind of sifting through some of the responses. And I for one, certainly, you know, during the remaining portion of my tenure, would like to know how people perceive we're doing in that arena and, you know, how you might define that. Maybe it kind of filters over some of what you're asking here, but, you know, I can just tell you, calls to my office the last, just the last few days, let alone over time, you know, go certainly to the issue of homelessness. But then in the reference that Supervisor Serna made, we were talking about a code enforcement issue that rose to the board yesterday. And so those are important things. They're quality of life and oftentimes get to the bottom of the barrel when it comes to some of the budget priorities because they, well, we're doing this, you know, we're picking up everybody's, you know, garbage and recycling every week, so we're doing our part, but illegal dumping is a big issue and it's growing and it's, it's all over the county, from rural to suburban to urban settings. And so before you go out, if there's a way to maybe capture that, and Ann, I just offer this as a real, I think as a, try to be a constructive suggestion, because as much as we've tried to embed that into our budgeting process over the decades, it doesn't compete as well for some of it because it doesn't have designated dollars in a lot of cases, unless it comes from, say, solid waste where you have an enterprise. And when, you know, when we talk about human service and health and human services that have dedicated sources or transportation that had a, you know, significant sum of dedicated resources, those quality of life programs and parks is one of those that I think has been on the, you know, and I've been a part of the decision-making process, has been on the short end when it comes to capital. But, you know, code enforcement, having sufficient support for that, for some of the other things that would help us fill in sidewalk gaps and, you know, make more walkable neighborhoods, things we talk about, we have plans for, but don't always rise well, even in the best of times in the budget process. And so I guess I would suggest, if we're really trying to get a sense of the, of what's on people's minds and kind of bore down into it beyond this, I would suggest we ought to ask a question or two around that. Maybe you put it in this list here and develop a question, but if we really want to know what's on people's minds as relates to neighborhood services, neighborhood quality of life, these all have some, you know, relevance and in some cases, very significant relevance, but I think there's a way to try to get it down a little closer because it may help guide us again as we go into budgeting in the years to come.
Thank you. Please proceed. Good.
Well, I think that actually takes us to the end of the formal presentation, so I'm happy to answer any other questions on the list of goals and services or anything about... about the survey approach in general. Any other suggestions or thoughts you may have for things that we didn't address, that you'd like to make sure are captured in some capacity, would welcome hearing about those as well.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I'm sorry. One other thing that occurred, again, just thinking about your question one more time, is that when we look at, we talk about, doesn't really get to economic development. I saw something about creating jobs here, one of these here. But I think talking about our business districts, where we have employment centers, we have areas that we have retail, shopping, service areas, and, and again, I'll maybe refer this to the unincorporated area, where, you know, what do people think about that? Because again, we've struggled with that aspect, too. And we've got major boulevards and transportation corridors, and retail strip centers, some of them aging in place, some of them have vacancies due to a combination of things. Certainly COVID hasn't helped in a lot of respects. And I think we need to ask that, because again, you know, it's an area where those, those programs haven't been as, on the same footing for competition funds, because largely it's going to be general fund. And when we're making choices about, you know, life-saving services and things that, you know, address, things that maybe weren't more acute. But I, but I, and so you said a wide variety of local businesses, and attracting retaining local businesses, but there's a public investment that goes into this as well. And so, how you either frame that question, maybe in the earlier part of the survey, or here, I think, I believe we need to know that. And, you know, we've done some work in that areas, and certainly have committed some dollars. But if you look at that in relative scale, and we're going to have some discussion about this with ARPA, about economic recovery, and how we may help folks coming out of the pandemic. But that's an area where I think the county, from the standpoint of tax base, but also quality of life and service availability, particularly those that people need to go to a location for, and it may go to food deserts, it may go to the area where you have a lack of services, and how we invest our sales tax dollars, our property tax dollars, or, you know, some of discretionary income, into helping some of those areas, you know, either thrive and/or, you know, continue to be areas that people won't find desirable. And part of this is streetscape, part of it's public safety. So it is, again, it's threaded through here. So I just think, again, getting at that would be useful in helping us to set priorities. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Not a question for you, Dave. Again, I appreciate the presentation. It's really one for our CEO. And I guess the best way to phrase this is, we're going to, so we're deploying the survey for the principal reason of understanding the community's disposition relative to priorities for the budget, correct?
That is correct. And so that we, as staff, can make some budget priority recommendations to the board.
Hypothetically, what if the survey gives us a result that is fairly incongruent with what staff preconceives, or even what the board preconceives? Are we going to be prepared to explain at some point, perhaps very uncomfortably, that, well, it's good to have the information that the survey provides, that for various reasons, we're going to deviate from what the community tells us? It's a bit of a gamble.
Yeah, it is a bit of a gamble. And I'm fully committed to being completely transparent about what the survey says. And alongside of that, would give my recommendation, which may be different. I hope it's not. But I certainly, that is possible, and I would explain very clearly why the recommendation is different, and it is something we will all have to grapple with.
So to some extent, to be very candid here with the public, it sounds to me like this is intended to, in part, perhaps in large part, confirm as much as anything else. We know generally, you know, having gone through the recent experience with the ARPA survey, you know, that exercise, at least for this board member, served to confirm kind of what we understood ourselves already, just doing the jobs that we do and being as close as we are to our district and our constituents, and understanding those issues. I just, I just really want to understand, kind of, what is the added value that we get from this? Because I think it's useful, but perhaps it's even more useful in the context that Supervisor Natoli has just stated, which is really giving departments, giving the board, giving our executive team a better handle on how to, you know, provide services better, how to perhaps govern with a fine-tuned ear. So...
Yeah, really good points. And I think this also speaks to this, my pursuing increased customer service in the county. This will help educate us on what we need to do. With regards to the budget, you know, how will it help us? So we routinely get a lot of input from the community around the budget. And this is an opportunity to get input from the community that's more broadly based, and is statistically significant, which I think is really important. So I, and I do think, every time we've done any kind of outreach, the top priorities come out exactly the same. We did it with the ARPA funds, which was certainly an elegant process, but we did it there. We reached out to all the boards and commissions, and literally, the feedback has been completely consistent. I believe this will probably validate that, but it certainly is not a foregone conclusion.
I just wonder, again, out loud here, there's been a lot of interest expressed by numerous groups and individuals. I'd say it's crescendoed in the last two or three years. And I would expect it's probably not going to dissipate, an interest in quote-unquote participatory budgeting. This is not a surrogate for that, I don't think. However, I'm wondering whether or not we ought to have a question, or perhaps a series of questions, around how the community values the concept of participatory budgeting. It might help us better understand whether or not it's just a certain corner of the county represented by a handful of advocates that is truly interested in that, or if it's an interest that is perhaps more broad across the county. Just a thought.
We would have to work hard to define, and I'm looking to David as well, what participatory budget means, because I think it means different things to different people.
Which is even more rationale for trying to get a better handle on what people think about it, right?
Yes. And that, and it's risky. That's probably even riskier. But we can certainly talk about how we might include a question around that and what it means.
Yeah, I guess my principal concern, Anne, is I don't want to be accused, and I don't think you want to be accused, of using this as a foil to try and, you know, have those that have been advocating for participatory budgeting now for months or years, to say, well, that, you know, you tried to sell this as participatory budgeting. I think we just need to be prepared to explain, no, that was not the purpose of this. This was intended to give us better insight in terms of the broader interest across the county, in terms of just simple budget priorities.
Yes, I totally agree. I'm, in no way, shape, or form, am I hoping to present this as participatory budgeting, because it is not. It is feedback. It is statistically significant feedback, but it is not participatory budgeting.
If I, if I might, Supervisor, I think it's helpful to recognize that this process, what we are measuring is public perceptions. And those are perceptions from members of the public who are not going to be fully briefed on the details of the county budget, nor should they be expected to be. And as a result, we will get some feedback, as we discussed before, because members of the public may not be clear about what services the county provides versus the city, versus the school district. Some of it clearly won't be relevant for the decisions you have to make about the budget. But one thing the survey may do is highlight where there is a gap between what the public perceives and what you know to be the case, based on where you're spending money, where service demands are, where shortfalls are. And one thing that can do is help guide you in efforts to continue that dialogue with the public, understand where there's a need for some communication or outreach to the public, so that they have a fuller appreciation of some of the realities that you're grappling with. And some form of participatory budgeting, I think, those processes are usually designed to inform the public and have a more robust, informed conversation than what one can in a survey. So, you know, to echo that point, it's in no way a substitute for that kind of a process.
I appreciate that. My experience with the concept and interest in participatory budgeting is that it can quickly, very quickly, set expectations. And many times, those expectations are the product of misunderstandings about, you know, what we're actually doing in the course of budget deliberations and hearing from staff. So I just want to avoid setting expectations that are hollow. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Desmond.
Hey, I just want to thank you for the presentation. You know, I really appreciate Supervisor Serna's comments. And, yeah, this is certainly not participatory budgeting, but it certainly is a, this is progress in terms of much more involvement and engagement with the public than probably the county's ever done. I think that's a really great thing. We could, we could sit up here and drill down on a lot of these questions, and obviously, we all have ideas. And I'm sure this will be something that will evolve over time, right? But my hope is, and I also, you know, Supervisor Natoli and his comments, just about this informing the customer service aspect of the county. So it not only would inform the budget priorities, but also how, I hope, it really will give us a vehicle, and how we can improve customer service throughout the county, of course, but in the unincorporated areas, with respect to the items that are unique to them. So I really appreciate the presentation and appreciate your efforts. And I look forward to us implementing this, and I think the benefits that we're going to see from it. Thank you.
Supervisor, if I might, just one addition in response to your comments, which I should have mentioned before. Another function of a survey like this is it can provide a baseline for you to measure progress against in the future. Once we understand where residents are today in terms of their perceptions, if you choose to do this again in a year, or two years, or on an annual basis, you can see whether public understanding is increasing, whether satisfaction is going up, if there are changes in public priorities. And you can learn a lot, not just from the data at one point in time, but how it shifts and evolves in the future.
Good point. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, Dave, one other thought occurred to me as I was, again, listening to comments from my colleagues. Something that's not on this list of goals and services, and it's a very important aspect of what county does, obviously cities do it as well, but, and it pertains to community planning, and whether there's preservation of open space, support for agricultural pursuits, a variety, obviously, of lifestyle choices that relates to where people would choose to live and make their home, and communities and so forth. And so, I don't know how you embody that in a question, but I think the county is fairly unique, and certainly with respects to, you know, the agricultural base. It's still a significant economic contributor. Any number of folks, and many of them who may reside in a suburban or urban setting, you know, work in related industries. And so, trying to capture that, because that's something unique, and again, something that the county, as a part of its diverse geographical makeup, and its diverse population of people, I think is very important. And we shouldn't lose sight of that. And again, cities may have open spaces defined within their general plans and so forth, but the county has a unique and a very important role. And I just think it's important to try to capture in some way, again, if we're looking at priorities and how that fits. To take it back to my earlier comments about our vibrant business districts that we want to see, our livable neighborhoods, you know, the county, for half the residents, we are the municipal service provider, and we are responsible from all those things, A to Z, in addition to the countywide services. And I think it goes to somehow, you're going to break that out. But somebody could capture that in a way that this board, for that hat that we wear, and that role that we play that is part of the budget tension that we see because of the division of responsibilities, as well as the dollars that are available as to any discretionary basis. And so, if there's a way to capture that, Dave, and I know you understand municipal and certainly county government, so if there's a way to do that and do that efficiently, I think it would be important to know that. And then lastly, I just want to say that, when you open the survey, do you do any descriptor that you tell them a little bit about Sacramento County? That geographically, it's 1,000 square miles, you've got seven cities, large unincorporated area, and a million and a half plus residents? I mean, do you do any of that, or you just leave that all to people's, you know, awareness or not?
We don't. We sort of leave that to their existing awareness, primarily just because we want to get into the questions as quickly as possible and keep the survey as concise as we can. To the extent that there's a piece of information that is important and germane to how they answer the questions, we should obviously think about including that. But we try to leave as much room as we can to ask about the details of their perceptions, and try to keep the introductions as brief as we possibly can.
Is that information available to your surveyor, though? If somebody said, well, how big is Sacramento County?
Actually, no. We, because we want to make sure, for the purpose of being able to have an apples-to-apples comparison in the data, that every respondent is provided with the exact same information before they answer the question. We don't want one respondent to have a more detailed narrative.
No, no, I'm not saying that. But if somebody asks you that question, if you're the surveyor and I ask you, and you're asking a question about one of these, I say, well, how big is Sacramento County?
They would simply say they didn't know. And they can repeat the question, but they, we don't want to...
Oh, I see. So you never deviate from the question.
That's right. It's important that it be asked the same way of every respondent.
Okay. All right. Well, anyway, I've given you enough thoughts. I'm just adding to your misery here, but...
No, no, no. Good ideas, good ideas.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Real quick, I assume FM3 also conducts focus groups?
We do.
Okay. Is there, in your estimation, an opportunity, once we get the survey results, and I presume we're getting cross tabs on this, that from that survey result, or set of results, that we could, if there was some interest in a particular area, work off that to conduct focus groups, to maybe dig deeper, understand a little bit better in greater detail, concerns, challenges, but opportunities, where we're, what our strengths are, those types of things?
Absolutely. We could certainly provide those services, and we'd be happy to talk with staff about some options in that regard.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. And Mr. Metz, thank you very much for bringing us up to speed and giving us a chance to have some input. We're looking forward to the final product. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
And I don't know if we have any public comment on this item. I do not. We do have one caller and the queue. Okay, okay, great. We'll take the public comment, then.
Please transfer the call. Hi, caller. You're in the meeting. You can start your public comment. You have two minutes.
PJ, he/him. With this survey, I kind of wish that you had attempted to involve community input and voices in the process of developing a survey for the county's 1.5 million residents. I say this because of the abstract failure that was the Deloitte Google form made by an intern. No disrespect to interns, but seriously, that was a waste of money and hugely uninformative. And much of that could have been realized early on, that community voices were included as a sounding board. And when I heard departments and existing bureaucracy were contacted, I didn't hear any community orgs that were contacted. I understand this may extend the timeline, but better to do it right the first time. Now, you heard presentations from the people's budget two or three times. You saw the data that they had available to them from over 2,500 residents of the county. And you had the ability to take the survey yourself and distribute it among your constituents, if you wanted them to be represented in the sample. Volunteers working for free with a community focus did a better job than the Deloitte multi-hundred thousand dollar contract. And given that that is a fact, I would ask that you engage similarly with community voices to ensure the questions being asked on this additional costly survey will actually represent what community members are struggling with, and to ensure the disadvantaged communities within our area are adequately represented. Especially given the fact that more affluent communities already have an outsized stay in our politics, given the access that they have to elected officials via their donations to those officials. I want to be sure that the voices of those most impacted by a lack of investment historically are the voices that are weighted more heavily going forward with new investments, especially when other communities have already received massive amounts of investments in their local services and their local amenities. Please keep historically... Please keep historically disadvantaged communities, those having received the least investment and those needing the most investment now, at the forefront of the discussions that do any further survey and when analyzing those same results from potential recommendations as to new investments. I agree that, I also agree with Serna when she says that the term public safety is too broad and too subjective. I would suggest limiting it to ensure our interpretation of survey taker's intent is clear. Also, I would encourage reaching out to multiple unhoused advocacy organizations to distribute the URL to ensure that unhoused folks can take the survey.
You have 15 seconds.
Lastly, when you ask about income, I'd suggest asking about education level as well at the same time, so you can ensure that that portion of the population is representative as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was your only commenter.
Okay. And I have no more comments from board members, so thank you very much for the update and the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to do what I should have done before item number one, which is off-agenda comments, probably.
We do not have any off-agenda callers in the queue.
Okay. I do have one person in the board chambers, Jebby Pamplona.
Hello. I drive bus at the airport and I have called, Cindy Nickel is in charge, and I called her office and let her know that I knew a way that the airport could make, or the county could make money off of the buses. And no response. I called a few times. I emailed Phil Serna with the same information, but what I said was, "You could make 36,000 to, 360,000 to a million a year off of your buses." And, but I didn't give him anything, any information about the buses because I was kind of uncomfortable with calling myself out. So, the buses at the airport are billboards and I drove for a place that they paid 5,000 for one month for us to drive around for dignity health. So you could be doing the same thing with those billboards that we're driving around anyway and make money off of them. So that, I think that's my great idea and I would love to give you all my information.
I think it's a great idea, too. That's a first for me to have someone come in and give a great idea like that.
Well, it's giving you money.
Yeah.
And you just wrap them, wrap them with advertising and people will pay to do it. I have a lot of list of people that I would love to contact and tell them.
Well, we'll definitely look into that. That could be something that supplements our budget. Supervisor Serna has a comment.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for taking time out of your day to come explain your idea and I'll certainly commit to following up through my staff and with Cindy's staff to find out what opportunities there may be in terms of your idea. It may not be as, as easy as you might think. I don't know that for a fact, but I do want to understand, because it is a good point. We do it, obviously, on our regional transit district buses and...
And you're wrapping the buses at the airport with the same thing that when people arrive, they know it's a SMF bus.
No, I understand. The airport's a unique enterprise zone or enterprise fund because we have an added governmental, some added governmental oversight in terms of the FAA. I don't know whether they have anything to say about such things or not, but it's been my experience representing the International Airport now for 11 years that it's never a foregone conclusion that great ideas just simply get implemented without the federal government sometimes telling you why, you know, your good ideas needs to be, you know, curbed. But I'll certainly follow up. So, again, thank you for being here and sharing what you did.
And Supervisor Serna and ma'am, Mr. Villanueva, who's here, will get her contact information so that we can reach out.
Gentlemen, that's giving you a wave there.
Okay.
Thank you. And Supervisor Kennedy also had a comment.
I just want to follow up on this real quickly without going into any detail, but, Anne, can we get the policy for advertising at the airport? Can you send that to the board? Because Mr. Serna and I tried to get some advertising about six years ago and we were rebuffed because of our policy, so maybe we need to revisit that as well.
Like I said, it's never, it's never as simple or as easy as we think it is.
They're getting, we have new buses right now and they're getting ready to wrap them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
And that was wisdom. Thank you Supervisor Serna. Okay, our next item, please.
Item number two, Sampson Dewey Alley, public hearing on temporary closure pursuant to vehicle code section 21101.4.
Good afternoon, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Frost, members of the board, Luther Rodriguez with the Transportation Department. And as I mentioned, today we're here for the public hearing on the temporary closure of the Sampson Dewey Alley. But before I start my presentation, I first wanted to thank Supervisor Kennedy and his office staff for helping, leading this effort. This is one of those locations that's been an ongoing issue for many years and kind of with this help and the collaboration between transportation, county council, waste management and recycling, county engineering, we were able to come up with some solutions to this that we will present today. But today's...
Sorry, through the chair.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
I, Lippi, how about if I set the table for you? You know, because this is history before we even called your office. This was, you know, my fellow board members all have these circumstances in their district, but this was an alley. It's about three blocks long, so not a big area, but I'll bet we were spending as much money picking up illegal dumping on that three-block area as we are in most places in the county. I mean, it was, the day we would pick it up, that night it would be back. I mean, this was, of all of the dumping sites that we had, this was the thorniest. There was also homeless encampments going back through once. They lit a fire on the fence on one of the homes that was there. There's been drug activity, prostitution in this alley. I mean, it has been nothing but a problem. So we, you know, after spending countless funds of county money to deal with these issues, we just kind of threw our hands up in the air and said, "What can we do about this?" Back in eons ago, when I was 12 and I was on the city planning commission, you know, we started a program of closing alleys that were problem alleys. So I, that's what led me to come to DOT and talk about this. It's not as easy as it sounds, but I really appreciate DOT's efforts. We did have a community meeting and about 25 people showed up, which is pretty significant considering it's three blocks of an alley. And there was not one person at that meeting who spoke out against it. And I, again, thank staff. We had, we had great representation from staff. So this is highly supported by the neighbors and I just wanted to lay that groundwork and there you go, Lippi.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy.
So today's recommended actions is to open the public hearing, to hear and consider any oral and written testimony, and then close the public hearing, and then to adopt the attached resolution to temporarily close the Sampson Dewey Alley between Iowa Avenue and Brooklyn Avenue for the 18 months effective January 1st of 2022. As Supervisor Kennedy mentioned, this alley is located in the South Sacramento community, basically just east of Highway 99 and south of Fruit Ridge Road. And like I said, there's been a lot of issues coordinating with trying to figure out what to do out there. I think after the collaboration between the different departments, staff is currently recommending a two-pronged approach or two-part approach. And so, the first part of this approach would be to temporarily close the alley for the 18-month period pursuant to vehicle code section 21101.4 for this 18-month period. And then the second part of this would be to, following the closure, would be the vacation of the alley pursuant to streets and highways section 8300. And so, the closure of the road would be accomplished by putting up gates at the entries and exit points of this alley. And because this alley has actually had three segments, we have actually six gates for this closure that would be, will need to be accomplished with that. And so, as we close the gate, we would have key to access to the residents that need the access to the back of their properties and then also to any emergency services providers with an OX lock and any other utilities that are currently have, have infrastructure in the back of those alleys. So that's kind of what, how we would approach that. So as, as we move forward, today's action would be the first step to this process by closing the alley. Then staff will return to, in a future date, to request that the board consider approval of the vacation of the Sampson Dewey Alley. This will be done following additional community outreach regarding the vacation process and also the consequence of such vacation by the county. So that will happen afterwards with the community. Staff has also reached out to CHP and Sheriff regarding the recommendation for closure. Sheriff was very much in support since they've been dealing with this on and off for, like I said, a number of years. CHP didn't take a position because this is technically a non-maintained county right-of-way, so this is not something that they currently patrol, but they were supportive and would say they would help in, with any enforcement issues after, as we move forward with this process. So if the board approves this temporary closure, sacked-out staff will coordinate with waste management and recycling to do one final cleanup of the alley before moving forward with installation of gates. The gates would be installed with a contract from the transportation will let out. And the closure is that right now, after some coordination with some of the gate contractors, it's anticipated with their workload and stuff that most likely something like that, if approved, would happen probably sometime in mid-January. That's kind of the information that we're getting. So the, from a public outreach perspective, as Supervisor Kennedy mentioned, his staff organized a public outreach meeting initially out at the community on August 18th to discuss the proposed closure and vacation process. And like you mentioned, everybody who attended was very much in support. As you could see, there was some frustration from them as to the ongoing, ever-ongoing issues out there. So that, that was really positive. They thought, you know, the county's really helping us out and moving forward with this process. In addition, staff also posted notices out at the alleys about this hearing in both English and Spanish, and also sent out notices to all of the abutting property owners along the alleys. Staff estimates that the gates would cost approximately 65,000 for the six of them. And these costs will be funded by the Department of Waste Management and Recycling revenues from the commercial waste management program. That can, also, and then as a follow-up, there's also probably going to be some additional costs for the second step of the process, which would be the vacation of the alley or the vacation of the right-of-way on the alley. But that'll come in the future as we work through that process and that'll be reported when we come back. So that, that concludes my short presentation. I'm here available for questions, but also have staff from the different departments also available in case there's questions that I might not be able to answer.
Thank you, Lippi. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, first I want to applaud Supervisor Kennedy and county and department of transportation and waste management and other departmental staff for their efforts. But I wanted to ask a couple of questions here. One is, is that you cited here, and obviously we're the county council, vehicle code, just closure, temporary closure for 18 months. Is there the ability to revisit and to extend beyond the 18 months or are you under some clock that begins ticking as soon as those gates are installed that then prescribes that after 18 months you have to reopen it? I'm just curious about what the law is on that.
Yeah, this is a temporary closure, but there is the opportunity to come back before the 18 months to extend it. And I think you could do that for eight constant, continuous periods, so for basically 12 years if you, if the board keeps approving it after 18 months, after each 18-month period.
Well, again, and that's, I appreciate you specifying, I didn't see that in the staff report, but that, because I think it allows time, one, for the supervisor, but also working with residents, because a total vacation of that works if you've got, you know, a pretty, unanimous property owner involvement. But if not, it can be, you know, it can be a process, having gone through this in a different situation, it didn't involve illegal dumping, but, you know, Lemus Road and the alleyway that served that property off of Elk Grove Florin, had one property owner who had access and, you know, we looked at vacating, most of the property owners were in agreement and we never, never got there. And so, I raised that. And then I wanted to ask also, when we say one final cleanup, because as we all well know in these chambers, but anybody else that's seen what happens in neighborhoods, that you prevent the vehicular access, but pedestrian access is not going to be foregone. And people can bring things in, you know, not necessarily by truckload, but they can bring it in one piece at a time or, you know, find it advantageous to dump stuff. So when we say, because if we, once we vacate it, then it's not our responsibility. We're not doing that today. So we'll have key to access for residents and others that have, you know, utilities, I guess, if they need to get in there. But when you say one final cleanup, you're going to go through and clear debris before you put the gates in, but we're not saying, I didn't take it, but I want to be sure that if you get some accumulation over time while you're working through this other process with Mr. Kennedy and the residents, that we would still maintain the responsibility to clean up right away from time to time. Is that accurate?
Yeah. We'll still provide support during that time, but the difference maybe in the gates that were, I was referring to, maybe I didn't explain to the detail, was that we're putting up a gate that would probably prohibit both pedestrian and vehicular traffic. And it's to prevent the bringing in of the accumulation of debris that usually happens with the normal pipe gate that we use when installed.
Okay. So they'll have to bring it by drone then, if they're going to drop it, so, okay. All right. Thanks, Lippi. That's all I had.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. This sounds like a very worthwhile resolution to, to what we all encounter in one way, shape or form in our districts in terms of illegal dumping. I did have a question though, just, and perhaps forgive me if I missed it in the board letter, but was there any consultation with the fire department?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the staff has followed up with fire department and the different emergency services providers for the area to ensure that they were okay moving forward with the process. So they'll have Knox lock access to the gates. So we should be good.
Okay. And in terms of, there is some, some brief mention of public utility easements. Is there a, for instance, another agency easement such as a smud easement?
There's, there's some overhead lines through there that we want to make sure that, we just need to confirm what other utilities are, but I think there's smud and I'm not sure who else at this point. But we'll confirm that whoever has access would have access to the, to the gates we unlock.
Were they consulted at the forefront?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. We sent out a utility letter to all of the utilities to advise them.
Good. And then lastly, if this were to evolve into a permanent remedy, is the expectation that the property owners adjacent to the alley would have, would have the use of, I don't know how you do it, but would have use of the added property of the alley based on their frontage to do, to do what? Would, I presume they couldn't, they'd be restricted from building, so they couldn't add on, but how would that be memorialized?
So the expectation moving forward with this is that there would be an access easement retained so that property owners could continue having access to the back of their properties. So the access easement would continue to be there and then also the utility easement. So they wouldn't be able to move their fences back to get more area.
Okay. And there were, and that in itself would serve to explain the do's and don'ts, not just with the current property owners, but let's say 10, 20 years from now, if it becomes permanent, subsequent owners understand that that's, there's, that they have access, but they, they can't build on top of that.
Right. I think that should, yeah, yes, I would say so.
Well, it sounds like you might just want to button that up if it's not buttoned up.
We will follow up and confirm that that would be the case.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, Supervisor Natoli.
One other question, so whether you go with this on an ongoing temporary basis till it gets to the second step you're talking about here, you're controlling the access at the existing right-of-way on the, on the streets that go east-west. And so, will the gates always remain in the public domain to be maintained by the county in the event that they're damaged during any intervening period? Again, that can happen.
Yes.
Is the county retaining that responsibility? And otherwise, if you vacate this and you provide some private access, then who maintains those gates over time? And maybe the question simply is, we will continue to maintain those gates for, for stable future.
I think the initial intent moving forward would be that the gates would be, when the abandonment does happen, if it happens, as you mentioned, that it would be the responsibility of the property owners. That way they have more, they have more coordination... That way they have more, they have more coordination between the neighbors as far as the locks and everything else.
Okay, but I'm just going to tell you, that's, I've got a lot of experience in the rural areas and elsewhere. That only works as far as the people are cooperating, but if the gate gets broken and I don't, you tell me, you go fix it, and I say, I don't want to fix it, I don't care if that gate's there or not, I don't want the dumping. I would say if you're controlling at the public right-of-way, and I've just, Supervisor Kennedy can, you know, work with his constituents and with all of you, if you don't have a framework for maintaining that controlled access, vacated or not over time, Lupe, and I know maybe something DOT doesn't want to have to have added to the list, I think it's problematic. I'll just be very honest with you, and maybe I could be wrong, maybe everybody's going to be in complete agreement and they're going to know on their deeds that part of that. But I can tell you with private road agreements that the county has required, and there are folks in the audience, yourself included, who know how that goes, and some of those have, go back 100 years in District 5, and I'm telling you that they're just, you know, there's enough stories out there by how, how it doesn't work well, that if we're taking this action, I would just say, you know, keep that in mind. And again, I know that you want to take on this responsibility, but that, you know, cooperative approach works for, it may work well in certain applications, but I'm not so sure here that if you hand that over to somebody and say, here, we fixed the problem, that that doesn't leave, leave the problem yet to be, you know, dealt with by a whole some other folks. So I just offer that as a cautionary word. And again, I know I've worked with you and Jose and others in the audience here on situations where, you know, we've got it in writing, the county conditioned it. So what? Make us, you know? And I mean, be very frank about it, and you know, because again, you've, we've had conversations about one here recently. And, and so I just, I offer that as some cautionary advice as you're moving forward, because I just think it, you're going to, you're going to solve this issue, and I'm very supportive of this, and I appreciate the work that goes around it, but kind of speaking from a bit of experience here.
And we'll take that into consideration as we move over to the next step, as we move forward with the process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Lupe and everyone. I am now going to open the public hearing and see if we have anyone on the phone. I don't have any comments here.
We do not have any callers in the queue.
Okay, seeing none, then we will close the public hearing and call for a vote.
With staff recommendation?
We have a motion by Supervisor Kennedy and a second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
And the motion carries by unanimous vote.
Thank you Supervisor Kennedy and DOT for fixing a huge problem. And thank you Supervisor Kennedy for giving us a history on it. It helped.
I'm sure we all have the same stories.
Yeah, we, actually, I do have one of those in my district, and I was like, that's a good idea.
I've got more than one.
Good afternoon, Leann.
Good afternoon. Item number three is PLMP 2020-00042, Resolution of Intention to Initiate a Rezone of at least 164 acres of multifamily zoning classifications and Initiate an Amendment to the Sacramento County Zoning Code.
Excellent, and I do not have a PowerPoint on this one. That PowerPoint's for the next one. I have no, I always have PowerPoint, so. So the item before you right now is the county's rezone program. This is a follow-up to the housing element, which I know the board recently adopted. And so you heard from us about this program that we are going to have to do to add sites to our inventory as mandated by the state and in compliance with the recently adopted housing element. So we're asking your permission to launch this and to get started on this program. And we will be addressing some of our apartment-zoned land where there is some upper limits on the density that does not comport with current state law. And so we will be addressing that to add that, those sites back into our inventory. And we will be looking at adding in some new apartment-zone sites, at least 164 acres of land is what we committed to in the housing element. We'll be looking at some additional programs related to other by right housing. We'll also be looking into some of the special planning areas to making sure that there's no impediments in any of those SPAs where we could facilitate additional inventory within the SPAs. So some of the key questions that I've heard from board members during the briefings was about the process, how we're going to go about doing this. Our first step is to reach out to the property owners where we think there are potential sites. I think a lot of you are very interested in following along with that process. You may be getting calls from property owners and others, so we would like to meet with each of you about sites that are in your district. So with your permission, we will go ahead and set up an initial meeting and then work with you on how actively you want to follow along and be involved. So I think that would be a great idea for us to keep you informed so that you know what's happening. Once we inform property owners and, and as we keep you informed, we will also, a key step will be going out to the community planning advisory councils, having some meetings there. We want to know if they have additional sites that they want added. And we will have to be doing a sequo document of some sort on this, so we need to get a project description nailed down with our maximum number of sites. I fully expect this is going to have some controversy. I fully expect by the time we get to the end of the process, sites may have dropped off. But for the sequo document, you know, we always have to look at the worst case, so we need the sort of the maximum amount that we're looking at there, and then, you know, we'll go through the process. And then ultimately, there will be formal public hearings before the Planning Commission and before the Board of Supervisors. Having said this, we have done this one other time. We did end up having to break it into a few chunks, so it may be that this one, you know, some of the easier parts, like the redefining the current zone, apartment zoning, we may come back a little earlier. More controversial sites possibly could take us a little bit longer. We don't want to do it side-by-side, but you know, we could ultimately have a couple of chunks that come through with the hearing process. Our collective preference, I think by both the board and by staff, is to find interested property owners. I don't know if that's possible. We have made this commitment, it's in all of our best interests to try to find property owners who want this. So of course, if board offices are, and others in the public are interested, that's, would be preferable. And so with that overview, we would ask your direction to have us start this rezone process.
Thank you, Leann. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Leann, there's an attachment, a map that's attached to this, and I don't know if it's able, if we're able to project that up. I want to ask some questions because it's not readily evident from the legend as to what.
So this is the state, I think this question actually came up during the housing element. This is the state TCAC map, Opportunities Map, and it is something we simply have to consider in the process. I don't, I can put it up on the overhead.
Yeah, if we could do that.
But this is a map that was produced by the state. I think you actually asked questions during the housing element about this map as well.
Well, right. And be, well, and if you're putting this as an attachment and going to be a point of, and that's why I'm asking the question now, because I don't know how you intend to utilize this. Obviously, we're, you know, we're having to conform with, you know, state law, or do our best to do that? So with the legend, what is meant by highest resource, high resource, high segregation and poverty? They put those, again, I'm not expecting you to offer the state's explanation, but there must be some understanding what those things mean and why they're, why they're categorized like that.
Yeah, so I cannot answer in great detail what the information the state used to come up with the staff, this map. This is something we have to consider, but there's certainly, as we described in the housing element, there are some areas that the state identifies as high resource areas that would not be suitable for apartment-zone housing.
Is that what that means? So high resource means that it's not suitable?
High resources, yeah.
What is their definition of high resource? What, I mean, what does that mean?
I think it's in terms of areas that are, may have higher, high-quality school districts. They may have less or more segregation, you know, those types of things. So we have to consider that when we're looking for sites, but obviously, we're not going to be putting apartment-zoned land out in the rural areas. It wouldn't meet other criteria, including having adequate infrastructure and services. So this is just.
Is there some sort of explanation behind that legend that the state used? Again, I, I think that, you know, this is obviously a public report, the map's attached with no explanation. It doesn't say you have to conform to this, I guess it informs the discussion. I just, I'm a little concerned that this, people will go looking, you know, once you reach out to these communities and they see this map, and again, I think I have a little better understanding what you just said or what this means. It's not our map, and if we don't have to adhere to it, if nothing else, serves as information background. But I'm just concerned, and I'll be very frank, when I see the, a rural area east of Highway 99 north of the city of Galt that says high segregation and poverty, on what basis are they making that determination? It's largely farmland, there may be some folks who are employed in, you know, farm-support activities that may be in a lower-income category. And high segregation means what? Is that racial segregation? Is it housing segregation? Is it transportation segregation? I'm just concerned that these tags, as you go out and try to look at 100, find 150 acres or more to meet our housing and rental obligations, that this map, again, if it's widely circulated and misunderstood, will not be helpful. I, I don't think.
Yeah, I think we included it because we are required to consider it, but it isn't going to be what is informing us totally, particularly because a lot of these high-resource areas don't have public services and infrastructure that would sort, support the right kind of zoning.
Yeah, no, and I get that. And again, and if you went out to the consumer's area and say you're a high-resource area, it's well and fine, but you don't, you generally don't have utilities available, even dry utilities.
Yes.
And so I get that, but I just.
Look into the housing element, we actually said that.
Yeah.
We have a description of that in the housing element, how a number of these areas, while they're high resource, are not going to be suitable.
But that didn't get attached. And, and again, I'm not finding fault here as much as I just, as I reflected on this and was looking at it again this morning, I got to think, you know, you're going to be tasked with, this board ultimately will see back the recommendations, and in some cases, people may embrace what you're proposing, in other cases, they may not. But if this gets to be a point of contention, just because of the verbiage and the way this is described, people might take offense right from the get-go and not even give you a chance as planning department representatives to get out there and explain what you're trying to do, how we're trying to meet the obligation, we're trying to work with communities and with opportunity sites that would afford opportunity for multifamily and affordable housing, you know, to be built. I mean, this is a tough enough conversation, and experience tells me that.
I think, I think we will, you're providing us some excellent advice to not use, to use this map only when legally required and to not lead with this map, because I think it could be obviously taken as very misleading.
Yeah, because I think you talk about the goals and, you know, and again, what we're tasked with as a county, and, you know, and that, and again, you know, it's not an easy task, and, you know, I don't know who from the planning department's going to get this assignment, but, you know, you know, it'll be certainly an overall learning experience for, for everyone. But it could be a positive one too, I mean, in some respects. I wanted to ask about, if I could, back to the other attachment, I guess attachment one, the Assembly Bill guidance that has the bullet points, if I could, Leann?
Sure.
Because this is a direction that apparently gets incorporated into our overall site, citing just criteria, that large bullet point, fifth one down, about a non-vacant site, but also a vacant, a vacant site that has been included in two or more consecutive planning periods.
Yes.
Is that, is that our general plan, or is that their housing element plan, period one?
That is in our housing element.
That's our housing, which is a five-year, five-year or 10-year plan?
It is now an eight-year plan.
Okay, okay. That was not approved to develop a portion of the blah blah. It says that, it basically is saying that that site that now has to, by definition, include, include that 20% of the units are affordable?
Yes.
Okay, so a site that's undeveloped, that hasn't been developed?
Yes.
That maybe RD 20 or RD 30, whatever it is, that there's, and there's no question about that. That, it could not be a entirely market rate or some other combination. It has to, right from the get-go, any submittal would have to have 20% affordable housing as a part of that development.
No.
No, it doesn't say that.
If you, if you want to use that site in your inventory.
Yes.
You must allow by right at least 20% affordable.
So they've added on to it.
You have to have a program in your housing element to allow residential uses by right. So you can't have a barrier to building it. Like if you triggered a use permit or some other discretionary entitlement, you have to make sure that that is, there's no discretionary decision.
So you erase that part of it, but what about, and so then, but does it prescribe that at least 20% of the units are affordable as well?
People can build market-rate housing on the sites. We're not, we're not forcing people to build affordable housing.
Because that has a component, even if they desire to do that, a lot of times it's not competitive, you know, they have to compete in the process, and so, and they don't control the outcome, no matter how good their project is.
Yeah, we don't have that authority to force someone to build.
Okay, so that's not what that's saying.
That's not what that's saying.
Okay. All right, all right. And then.
It's more a restriction on what we can assume in the housing element, which means over time, if there are sites that don't develop, it makes it more difficult to assume than your, assume them in your inventory.
Okay. And then lastly, the next to last bullet where, just so I can be clear, says for jurisdictions which are relying on, excuse me, non-vacant sites to provide 50% or more of its housing need for lower-income households, there is a provision which requires additional analysis to determine that existing uses do not represent an impediment. So give me an example.
Well, luckily, the vast majority of our inventory is on vacant sites. This is particularly like a small city who may have literally very little vacant sites. You know, they are forced to rely on reusing, you know, maybe a commercial building or something like that. They have to show how the cost to tear down that building is an impediment. This is the whole Assembly Bill, and we do not fall into that category where we're relying on more than half of our sites that are, have development on them.
Okay.
The bulk of our sites are vacant.
Okay. One final question then. So you haven't yet, you know, divulged the list of, at least from a planning perspective, of sites that you're going to be making the presentations to the communities. You will be going to the CPACs initially, is that the approach, or are you going to property owners?
No, we're going to property owners first. We need to communicate to the property owners first, before, to the supervisor.
Or concurrently, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, no, before we, well, before we go to the community. No, we don't want to.
All right, so could I just ask you around that? Again, not with specificity about the sites or where they're located. How many sites have you identified at least preliminarily to begin to make those contacts? Are you?
Probably 150 or so sites. A lot of sites.
Okay.
We want to start with a relatively, want to start with a relatively large pool, assuming that it may shrink slightly over time.
Okay, and the 100 sites reflect, how much gross acreage will you start?
I don't know, actually.
The only reason I'm asking that, just to get some sense, is that, you know, whether the supervisors are apprised of it or not, just, you know, kind of what the range of feedback that we may get right from the get-go, having gone through this on two separate occasions during my term on this board, so. Okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, ma'am chair, and thanks, thanks, Leann. And I had some of the same questions about this map, and, and it just wasn't intuitive to me what this means and what role this will play in guiding decisions you'll be making. So I, I mean, I guess, to the extent it will be a part of the conversation, it will be guiding the conversation, I hope you'll be able to provide us with a little more information about what the legend here means and some more explanation about what effect, if any, it has. I certainly am going to be very interested in whomever gets, I guess, the unfortunate job of doing this, or I guess fortunate, but whoever ends up doing this.
So Leann Mueller, or the other Leann, and you can't even say Leann M. because we're both Leann M., so.
No, I'm sorry.
Leann Mueller will be leading this effort up.
Okay, great. So I am very interested in this and being part of the process and finding areas, certainly in my district, where we can help provide additional multifamily affordable housing. What I would ask though, as we, as we go through the process, and maybe we have a discussion with my office at least, with District 3, sites that you're contemplating, is also have, you know, if you could have a map for us that shows where the existing multifamily affordable housing units already exist. Because, you know, I get a lot of criticism from my constituents about, for instance, the Ardennes Arcade area, which already has a very large percentage, kind of the west Ardennes Arcade area, a large percentage of sites. And then another question I had on attachment one, the same page that Supervisor Natoli was asking about, I'm just curious, on bullet number two, can you, what does that mean? The inventory must have sufficient water, sewer, dry utilities available. Is that, is that really referring more to? that really referring more to rural sites or?
Yeah, so, I mean, generally, as with all sites in the housing element, inventory staff has to do some assessment that it, that infrastructure is generally available, hence why we would not pick one of those rural sites, because we could not possibly assert that water, sewer, transit, et cetera, are available, particularly the hard infrastructure, right? Yeah.
But that wouldn't be an impediment to identifying sites, say, in like the North Watt corridor, where it needs, it will need upgrades, certainly, to a lot of that infrastructure.
Right.
And those upgrades is, that's probably deterring a lot of infill developers from actually looking at some of those areas. And this is something I brought up many, many times about having a comprehensive plan at the county in some of these corridors to identify where the opportunities are and what maybe the county can do to incentivize or make it a more attractive place to build some of this multifamily affordable housing, which is so desperate, desperately needed in that, in that part of the county. Okay, I just had a clarifying question about that. Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you. So not to beat the dead horse here, but just so I have a better understanding of the now infamous map here, can you explain, Leanne, what implication this has as a high and moderate resource area for a comprehensive plan proposal? So let's use Upper West Side. What does that mean? What, if anything?
I'm not sure that it means anything. Pending master plans that aren't approved and are on their own timelines probably would not be where we were, we are looking to do this rezone program.
Okay.
Because it would be difficult to demonstrate that, you know, with assurity that we could build a project in the timeline. So that probably wouldn't be where we would look, just because you mentioned that specifically.
So there's no, there's no opportunity even to use this perhaps to even shape, I don't know, conditions of approval or perhaps even the, you know, the land use diagram of the plan and?
So-
I'm not necessarily looking at it as a bad thing, I'm looking at it as an opportunity as well.
We actually already have that criteria in our general plan land use element, the criteria that speak to how you amend into the urban policy area, already has its own requirement for master plans about the amount of multifamily in relationship to the housing element that has to be done. So that is already in there, your board has already put that in there in the land use element, and that is a factor in those master plans, but that's a little bit separate than probably what we're looking at in this rezone program. Obviously, if some of those master plans, you know, get up and running and start building and if we can justify that, that the units are likely to be built within that seven to eight-year period, we would be happy to rely on those units, but when there's uncertainty and lack of approval, that makes it difficult to justify to the state.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, and thank you for the thoughtful way that you approached this whole thing, because it is hard for us out in the district. I don't have any public comment, I have no more, you were done, correct? No more questions from the board? Do we have any phone comments?
Not have any commenters online.
Okay, so we are at that moment in time for an approval.
Madam Chair, if I just, it's a moment in time, you know, I'm prepared to move the item, knowing, or maybe not knowing what comes next, but what sort of timeframe, could I just ask, do you anticipate with this? Because again, it's, you know, you've got Leanne and Todd here, and you're going to task them, they're already tasked with some pretty challenging items. What is the timeframe? We take the step today, what's the expectation?
Our last effort to get through all of the sites took right about three years, but we did do some faster. So that was the, I looked earlier today at the binders to see what the last one was. So preferably less than three years, and again, that may be why we chunk some of it and take the easiest stuff first, because we are, we do need more inventory in our housing element, and so we may be splitting it up a little bit into chunks.
Okay.
I would think the best case scenario for the first round would be maybe a year. That would be, I think, especially for the redefining the current apartment sites, that's going to be a lot easier to tackle.
And if, during the time that you're doing this, you either see development of sites that come through, if the, you know, market gets hotter, there's, you know, bond market, obviously there's some need out there, do we get credit or you only get credit once you've adopted a plan and then you've specified the sites and all that, or, you know, while you're in the mix of doing certain things that address the state's requirement for having available inventory, but if you get some builds and/or some projects that trigger, and maybe there might be a private application or two that actually, you know, get into the process, and we've already done multiple things to facilitate that, do you get credit? Or while the ledger's open and we're doing this, you just kind of working against ourselves?
You get credit for deed restricted affordable housing, and so that's great, but you lose every time someone builds market rate housing on a site. That's why we need an oversupply, and that is relatively new. That is not how it used to work.
And when you say market rate housing, you're talking about single family or market rate multiple family?
If we have a site that we have identified that is a potent, is a, on our inventory as a potential affordable housing site, typically because it's zoned for apartments. If someone comes in and builds a market rate apartment on that, we lose that site and those units.
The entirety of the site and all the units?
If it's all built, yes, the entirety of the site. That's why we have to have an oversupply.
Well, that's pretty fair.
Oh, yeah, no, I-
That's really fair to the-
I don't like it at all.
Wow.
Yeah.
Maybe I won't-
The supposition is by the state that it's a site that could otherwise be used for low-income housing, correct? So if you take that out of the inventory, that they're making the assumption that it's finite and every time it's done, it's-
Instead of just doing a true-up once every eight years, you have to do it in real time, which takes a lot more staffing. We have to now track this in real time, and we do, and it takes staff resources to do that.
Well, in that case, I'm not going to make the motion. I'll let somebody else do it.
Yeah.
I'll move the item.
We have a motion by Supervisor Serna and a second by Supervisor Kennedy.
And the motion carries by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Your next item. Sorry.
Sorry.
Your next item is PLMP 2020-00142, Ross Boundary Line Adjustment Board Review, and it is located at 13740 and 13880 Highway 160 in the Delta Community. The environmental determination is exempt.
And we should have applicants on the phone, so.
Hello, applicant? Hello, is Joseph or Esperanza Jerry Atlas on the line?
Jerry Atlas is on the phone.
Thank you.
All right, so, starting with a staff presentation, this is the Ross Boundary Line Adjustment. The project is located along Highway 160, just north of Walnut Grove, on the west side of the Sacramento River in the Delta Community. There are currently two parcels involved in this item. One is developed with a single-family residence and the other one is in an agricultural use, and there are a series of RD1 sites along the river road there. So the smaller parcel is zoned RD1 and the agricultural parcel is zoned AG80, 80 acre minimum, and there's a variety of zoning surrounding the site. The project applicants want to do a boundary line adjustment, which will be done later by staff, but we need permission from your board because it will end up with split zoning, and so we have the board weigh in whenever there's split zoning. So this is the Boundary Line Adjustment Exhibit, and a very tiny print there in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see how there are a series of lots, some of which do go into the AG80 zoning, and so these folks want to do the same thing that's been done further to the north by adding a little bit of land to the rear of their parcel for their personal use. And so they would be adding to this 1.97 acre parcel, adding a bit of land resulting in 2.47 acres with the split zoning, and in order to deal with that, we are having the board take the development rights on the AG80 portion so that if, unless it were otherwise rezoned in the future, it couldn't be further split off or developed separately. Staff has concluded it is consistent with the MAP Act, the general plan and the zoning code, that the lot configuration is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, since this is the circumstance for several parcels to the north, the resulting split zone isn't a problem, and we conclude that findings can be made. So we would have the board recognize the exempt status of the request under SEQA, approve the resolution accepting the conveyance of development rights, approve the resolution authorizing the split zone property, and direct the planning director or designee, in this case, surveys to process the Boundary Line Adjustment.
Thank you. We have no questions for you at this time, and I'm going to ask Mr. Atlas if he has any comments.
No, this is Jerry Atlas from Burrell Consulting Group on behalf of the applicant, and we have no further comments. Leanne did a great presentation of the entire application, and we're here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Atlas. We have no questions. I'll ask for public comment.
We do not have any online public comments.
Okay.
Then, Madam Chair, if there's no public comments, I would move the staff recommendation as outlined in the staff report, with our thanks to the planning department for their work on this.
Second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Natoli and a second by Supervisor Serna. Please vote. Thank you, Mr. Atlas, for being here, and thank you, Leanne and team, for your work on this.
You might want to know what the vote is.
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry. I must be in a hurry.
That's okay, and the motion carries with the unanimous vote.
There you go. It passed. Okay, next item, please.
The next item is, you are acting as a Sacramento County Water Agency. It is the Water Forum Update.
Good afternoon, Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. Before our presenter steps up, I just wanted to give her a brief introduction. Jessica Law is the new Executive Director of the Water Forum. She's been in the position for approximately 10 months now, replacing Tom Goring, who retired after 14 years in that position. Jessica has a bachelor's degree in biology from Connecticut College and a master's in regional planning from the University of Massachusetts Samhurst. She previously served as the Chief Deputy County, Executive Officer of the Delta Stewardship Council, and has more than 15 years of experience in water and environmental resource management, public process, and land use planning. She's spent the last 13 years working closely with experts in water management, fisheries, biology, ecosystem restoration, and environmental law. This experience will serve her well as she continues the Water Forum's effort to use science to inform regional efforts to protect and preserve the American River. Jessica joined the Water Forum during a particularly busy time. The Water Forum is in the process of updating the 20-year-old Water Forum Agreement, and the region is experiencing historic fires and drought, all of which have effects on the American River watershed. Jessica brings fresh ideas and tremendous energy to the Water Forum that will benefit the American River and the Sacramento region. So with that, I'll let her come up.
Thank you, Michael.
Jessica, as you're coming up, I just want to say I appreciate the use of the artwork for your slide there. It looks familiar.
Yeah, did you recognize it? I know, it's beautiful. It was so lovely to walk in the building this afternoon and see it up on the wall. Well, good afternoon, Supervisors. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm really looking forward to telling you a little bit more about the Water Forum. I know some of you are very familiar with the Water Forum and have been engaging with us for many, many years, but we've got a lot that's going on. So let's start the presentation. All right, so for those of you, if you just want to go to the first slide, is there, oh, here it is.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to talk about a few things this afternoon, so just to give you an update on where we are, just to give you an update on where we are at the Water Forum and what's happening right now. I want to talk a little bit also about critical challenges, especially this year with the drought, provide you a little bit of an update with where we are on Water Forum 2.0, which is our shorthand for talking about the Water Forum Agreement and the renegotiation of that, and then share with you some recent successes that we've had as well. So many of you know that the Water Forum, we have been coming together for 20 years. I love this phrase, it's from Ann Sanger at the City of Sacramento, and she always talks about the Water Forum as bringing peace on the river, the American River, and I think that's a really eloquent way of saying it, which is we have been working together with collaborative organizations for the past 20 years, whether it's citizen groups, environmental groups, water business, to really work together to find collaborative solutions for how we manage both reliable regional water supply and health on the Lower American River. And I'd say we've been doing that pretty successfully. California is certainly known for its water wars, and it really wasn't long ago that this region was engaged in very contentious battles over water and especially over the American River. So I'm proud to say that we are still continuing. We are certainly tackling the drought this year. Many of you remember the last drought in 2014 and 2015. What we're looking at this year can be likely a lot worse than where we were in 2014 and 2015, especially if this year is dry moving forward. Many of you may have seen Governor Newsom's drought declaration today. That is an extension of additional declarations, but extending it throughout the state or in other counties in the state, and it's really, it's not just Sacramento, it's not just California, it's really the entire West that is in drought conditions. And so, you know, the drought here is really, unfortunately, a case study in climate change for the region. When we think about climate change, we think about drought, wildfire, extreme heat, floods, and sea level rise. All of those affect this region for sure, and at the Water Forum, we're really focused this year on the drought. So throughout the year, the Water Forum has been collaborating with Water Forum members, with state and federal agencies, especially the Bureau of Reclamation, to anticipate and really proact, be proactive in the face of this year's water conditions and water challenges, and especially prepare for next year. We're really committed to working together to address this dire situation. In August, August 26, the Water Forum members passed a resolution that was really designed to bring the Water Forum members and all of its diverse interests together and to raise awareness about the situation, and then we really called on members and the public to voluntary, voluntarily reduce water by 15%. That call for voluntary action, you've been hearing it as well, you heard it yesterday in the governor's announcement around drought. And so this is just a snapshot from that drought resolution. There were five actions that the Water Forum members identified and agreed on that we wanted to move forward with to both track and monitor what's happening in the region and take action this year and going into next. So I just highlighted one of these, which is really to promote the sense of urgency, the reduction of summer and fall water usage through voluntary and robust conservation at a minimum of 15%, and other actions as well to reduce pressure on Folsom Reservoir and the Lower American River. The top priority for the Water Forum this year has really been to protect the storage capacity at Folsom Reservoir and to provide reliable water supplies and really help sustain those supplies to support the Lower American River itself. You know, in a drought like this year, we've really needed to rely on, you know, a lot of the factors are just completely beyond our control, we've really had to rely on our partners, but we are continuing to engage with them to improve our scientific and technical analysis and how we can support them in their decision-making on the river. So looking forward to 2022, I'm certainly enjoying the rain that we have today and yesterday and hopefully throughout the weekend. It still is just a drop in the bucket, so I'm enjoying it, but we certainly need a lot more precipitation to be coming to get us out of where we are now. So I want to talk a little bit about Water Forum 2.0. For those of you who have been engaged in the Water Forum Agreement, it's been longstanding over the past 20 years. It goes to the year 2030, and we are in a process right now to renegotiate that. The Water Forum itself is dynamic, living organization, and so is our agreement. is dynamic, living organization, and so is our agreement. And last, actually not last April, April 2020, the Water Forum members came together to start that process, to do a lot of learning about where we are, where we've been, how things have changed, including changes in regulation and legislation. There is a lot that's been accomplished in this region since the Water Forum Agreement was signed. So we're going to continue to build on that work and build on those successes. And so far, we've done a lot of work to strengthen the caucuses. We have new members of the public caucus, including Liz Bellis from Regional Parks. And we also have strengthened our business caucus, our environmental caucus, and then the water caucus as well. We're working now as an organization with all of the caucuses to really understand where the interests are. In the Water Forum, we talk a lot about interests versus positions. We ask the caucuses to come in and really be able to articulate where their interests are in the region and where those align with understanding water supply sustainability, protecting the health of the river, thinking about the legacy of the Water Forum and sort of how we steward our work and continue this really robust, amazing legacy of work going forward. And then, you know, also how we protect the habitat of the Lower American River. So that's where I wanted to leave us. And I'm so sorry, I have a video. We're going to send it. It didn't work getting it into the PowerPoint, but I'll send it after the meeting and you can all go check it out. It's on our website. If you click on any of our social media on Facebook or LinkedIn, on my LinkedIn profile, and you can check out the video. But this is a project that we accomplished this year. And first, I just huge shout out to Liz and to the FEI on Nature Center. We did a restoration project at Ansel Hoffman Park in the river. This is a sort of a sketch of what it looks like. But the project itself, we got in there with City, City of Sacramento, the Department of Utilities was the crew that was doing the work. We were out there for about four or five weeks moving a tremendous amount of rock and gravel. It was a really big, big production, but we, you can see there up on the map, sort of in the river, there's already a spawning riffle, which is, you know, salmon use it to come and lay eggs. That, there was already a spawning riffle there, but we enhanced it and expanded it and then also created an area called a rearing alcove. The way I like to think about the spawning and the rearing is that, you know, spawning is where the, the fish hatch. It's their nursery. And the rearing space is really sort of the kindergarten where they get to grow up. There's lots of woody material and plants. There's bugs that are attracted to the plants. They fall off. The fish eat them. They get super fat and happy. And that's what we like. So this project is installed. We had such a tremendous partnership with the FEI on Nature Center, which is located right there in Ansel Hoffman Park. And we really enjoyed showing the project off to local residents, stakeholders. We did, I think, about 14 tours of the project site. And you can still get out there and see it. In fact, this weekend, we're going to be out there. FEI on Nature Center has a Halloween or an Owl-ween event on Saturday from, I think it's about 10 to 3:00 and we'll be out there. Some of us might be in fish costumes as well. So if you want to come check it out, you can come see the project, see all the work that we're doing and learn a little bit more about salmon. So that's all I have for you today. Just want to say a huge, we'll, we'll send you the link for that. Just want to say a huge thanks to Liz and to Carrie Schmitz in Department of Utilities for all of their help and their support for the Water Forum, and especially to all the supervisors for your support over the years for the Water Forum, financial and otherwise. It's a tremendous organization. I'm thrilled to be here and we've got a lot, a lot to look forward to. So with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you, Jessica. Supervisor Desmond has some comments.
Thank you, Jessica, for, for being here. I was looking forward to the video, but I'll look forward to getting the link from Liz or from you. But I'm, and thanks for the plug for FEI. You know, that, that area of the habitat restoration is my, my stomping grounds in my district and, and practically my backyard growing up my entire life. And I just, it's a terrific project, what you've done down there. And I appreciate, you know, everything you do at the Water Forum. And I, you know, this board has, during our recent budget negotiations, you know, we, we really showed a, demonstrated a commitment to the American River Parkway and preserving and protecting it. And I certainly know we have a, a good partner in, in you and in the forum. So thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. I'm curious to know it, what you moved the rocks with. Was it a tractor or?
Gigantic bulldozers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah. Well, first, just congratulations, even though it's been 10 months, Jessica. Obviously, your previous work, familiar with that. And again, Tom during his tenure did a tremendous job. And I know that obviously you will carry on the good work and you leave your own mark certainly on the forum and on our, on our community. And so just was curious, the, what, what sort of timeframe has the forum set on the renegotiation of the agreement? You have a schedule at least for how you hope that will go?
Yep. Thank you Supervisor Natoli. The original agreement, it took them seven years to negotiate it. We are hoping for less than seven years. So somewhere between, we're aiming right now for sort of two to three. And we have, we've blocked it out into at least four phases. We are trying to complete phase one by the end of this year.
Okay.
So that, that might give you a sense.
Yeah, well, I would think, again, in, in certainly those initial phases, I know that in my first term as a member of the board, that, you know, certainly got drawn into that as colleagues at the time, certainly in, you know, working on it. A lot of that work had certainly begun prior to my election to this board. But, you know, working with a number of different interests, certainly throughout the county, but obviously some of them focused to the southern part of the county and with some of the agricultural interests. And again, I think having, you know, certainly 20 years of, or plus of, you know, work to, you know, look to and certainly the cooperation. And I think how it certainly is positioned in a number of respects as it relates to the current certainly drought conditions. But I think with the Stable Groundwater Management Act and other aspects of, of water as they touch not only the American River, but certainly the confluence and the Delta and both in county as well as obviously in the region. So I think there's, you know, good body of work, as, as you've said a moment ago, supported both financially, but I think certainly the, the, the interest of, you know, signers to the agreement and active participation, certainly Carrie and Michael and their colleagues, both within the Water Agency but within the county and, and more broadly, the interest in the community. So again, I, I think that that sounds like a reasonable timeframe. And as good as you're doing it before you get to, you know, 2029 and folks say, oh, oh, we need to see where we stand.
Exactly.
So I think it's, that's positive. And thanks for your leadership and leadership of the forum and certainly its members. And look forward to continue to good work. I think this has served the, the community very, very well in many respects.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli. And thank you Jessica. We're excited and looking forward to working with you. And I appreciate the update.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. And Liz was a good addition, so.
Yeah, Liz was-
One more thing for her to do.
Thank you.
My main thought, I just want to really say thank you to Jessica. She's been a great partner and they've been very engaged with our natural resources management plan development for the American River Parkway. And she is doing an excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. And I, I don't know if we have any callers on the phone.
We do not have any callers in the queue.
And I do not have any comments in the chambers. So we'll, thank you Jessica. And we look forward to seeing you next time. And next item, please.
Your next item is a resolution honoring Gil and Kay Albiani, 2021 Elk Grove Citizens of the Year.
We have both those items and I would just move those items. We're still waiting for additional information. So the resolutions will be circulated for signature, but we're doing both the 2020 and the 2021 Elk Grove Citizens of the Year on items six and seven. So-
Let me read item seven as well. I'm sorry, Mr. Natoli. Resolution honoring Jack and Tracy Edwards as 2020 Elk Grove Citizens of the Year.
Right. So they're going to have their, have their get-together this year that was postponed because of COVID last year. So I would just move those two items.
Second.
Thank you. I, did I hear you first or does it matter? Do you care? Okay. We have a motion by Supervisor Natoli and a second by Supervisor Serna. Please vote.
And the motion carries by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number eight is the county executive comments.
No comments this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do not see any board members in the queue with comments. And so with that, this meeting is adjourned.